Starting the recording. Chair, we're ready to start.
Let's do it, y'all. The time is 6:03 PM on June 9th, 2021, and I would like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to Order in interest of public health and safety and pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N2920, members of the Planning Commission staff are participating in this meeting by teleconference. In accordance with Executive Order, the public may view this meeting online but not in council chambers. The city launched a virtual commenting portal, eComment, that allows residents to comment and participate in the meeting from their own homes. You can find the link to eComment at www.chilavistaca.gov/virtualmeetings. Your comments must be received before I call for the close of the commenting period. In order to be considered, after the commenting period is closed, I'll announce a brief pause to allow the commissioners time to read any comments that have been received. If you have difficulty or need assistance with eComment during the meeting, please contact Planning Commission Staff for assistance at pc@chilavistaca.gov. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Burrows.
Here.
Commissioner De La Rosa, I know he's here, but I think he's having audio difficulties. Commissioner Milburn.
Here.
Commissioner Nava.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Vice Chair Zaker.
Here.
And Chair Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to item number three, which is Pledge of Allegiance. Came with this little bad boy right here. Commissioner Nava, would you be so kind as to leave for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please say Nava. Okay, I mean, yes. Uh, it's all. Stand.
Okay.
On a three. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this brings us to item number four, Public Comments. Public Comments is the section of the agenda for members of the public to address the board on items that are not listed on the agenda. I will now call for a two-minute pause to allow the public to submit any final public comments. Commissioners, just a reminder, please refresh the viewing screen to ensure new comments appear. Will staff please display the comments, public comments, and start the timer?
Yes, thank you.
Patricia is not allowing me to share, so can you give me rights, please?
Uh, sure, let me see. Okay, there you go. Thank you, Gabriel.
All right.
Chair Gutierrez. No comments were received via email or eComments. Thank you.
All right. Let's take a little feedback. Let's try this again. Um. The next item is 5.1. And. Okay. Can whoever, if you're not speaking, could you be so kind as to mute yourself at this time? All right, item number 5.1, considerations of a design review for a two-story building in a detached car wash at 1875 Auto Park Road Avenue. Oscar Romero Project will be providing the presentation.
Yes, and we're just going to send the presentation rights to Oscar, so he can present. Gabriel, are you able to do that on your end?
Give me a minute, please, please, please. She should be able now.
Yeah, I have it, I have it, I have it.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Gutierrez and Planning Commissioners. I am Oscar Romero, Associate Planner in the Development Services Department, presenting the items tonight. Tonight's item is a design review for a proposed automotive dealership consisting of a 54,420-foot sales service sales and service building with a 1,200-square-foot car wash. The proposed project is consistent with the permitted uses in the Auto Park North specific plan and subject to design review approval by Planning Commission. This exhibit shows three separate specific plans. One is the Auto Park North, another is the Auto Park East, and the Chula Vista Auto Park specific plan. The project site is situated in southern Chula Vista, north of Main Street and east of Auto Park Avenue. The project site is an existing 6.51-acre lot. The lot is currently vacant and adjacent land uses consist of the following. South of the site across Main Street is a vacant lot, and west of the property across Auto Park Avenue is an existing Masi Nissan dealership. And north of the project site is enterprise car rental, and east of the property is an industrial building. This view is from Main Street looking north. This view shows the lot from the west side looking east. This image shows the subject parcel from the adjacent northerly parcel looking south. The proposed two-story building is approximately 250 feet long by 165 feet wide, with an overall height of 29 feet. The main entrance to the building is located at the south side of the building and is complemented by an extension of a service canopy to the west and a new car delivery space to the east. The detached car wash building located at the rear of the property is 1,200 square feet and will be used to wash vehicles for sale and vehicles in for service. The remainder of the parcel would be improved within associated landscaping, access and circulation, including a designated fire lane and parking for customers and employees. A total of 333 parking spaces, 139 standard spaces, including five accessible, and 194 vehicle display spaces would be provided for the dealership. The floor plan is a proposed entry to include the showroom and sales offices located at the southern end of the building with service areas at the northern end away from Main Street. The building will include three canopy extensions, one on the east side for new car delivery, and two on the west side along Auto Park Avenue for servicing. The second floor includes a mezzanine with additional administrative offices, training room, break room, and a parts and storage area. Access to the mezzanine will be provided via an internal stairwell and elevator. The building will be constructed of concrete tilt-to panels with exterior finishes consisting of aluminum-clad metal panels, stucco, and decorative concrete masonry unit finishes. The design maintains an enhanced fenestration along Main Street and a portion of the side along Auto Park Avenue. The modern-style architecture incorporates textural and natural materials with a combination of stucco, decorative concrete masonry walls, and aluminum-clad metals. The color of the stucco and decorative concrete masonry will alternate between pelican gray, medium sand, and rock gray point color. The aluminum-clad metal panels will vary in color from gray, harvest bamboo, and polished aluminum. The fenestration is a clear, standardized glass with clear energy glazing on the front and a portion at the side.
It sounds like we're having some sort of mysterious audio issues. If you could, if you could address these issues for a second so that we can make sure that, um, for the record, everything is good.
Yeah, I'm hearing it as well, but everybody is muted. Is there anything we can do to everyone and then just provide access? My only thing is Michael De La Rosa.
I would like to text Commissioner De La Rosa, and I'll assume that this is probably why his phone not working so well, or is... Actually, it looks like he might have heard us. Um, all right, we'll continue.
Try muting Jamal.
Sounds better. Okay. The southern elevation will be the entryway and consist of one consistent horizontal. Oscar. Oscar, can you give me a second? Let me, I'm gonna mute everybody, and then can you unmute yourself, please? Yes, 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 yes. Let's try it right now. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. All right. The southern elevation will be the entryway and consist of one consistent horizontal plane at the highest point of the building along the south side and include a protruding entrance at the center of the building, adding variation in vertical planes fronting along Main Street and Auto Park Avenue. The proposed fenestration and modern architecture will provide distinctive visual interest to the surrounding area. The northern side of the building will house the servicing sector and maintain decorative masonry and stucco with a roll of doors for vehicle services. This image shows the elevation for the east and west sides of the building. The southern side of each elevation reflect an enhanced facade and architectural features along Main Street and subtly transition into the canopy and service area at the northern end to minimize visibility. Whoops. Okay. So. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving design review permit DR 20-0025, subject to the conditions in the resolution. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. Let's see here, do we... All right, do we have any clarifying questions from Commissioners? I don't happen to see any of my colleagues, so I'm gonna assume that there is no clarifying questions for staff.
So, actually, Chair, I just had one quick one.
Yes, Commissioner Milburn, please, please ask me a question.
Was this or a similar project before us at this same location or a very adjacent location, like about a year and a half ago?
Yes, Commissioner, I, it wasn't exactly here, it was on the northern end, it was Auto Park Place, and that was 1880 Auto Park Place, and that was for a collision center.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from my colleagues?
Chair Gutierrez.
Vice Chair Zaker, please, ask your question.
Yeah, it's actually a follow-up to Commissioner Milburn's question. I also remember that there was another project that came before us, which was another dealership. If I recall, it could have been a BMW dealership, do we have any?
Yes, Commissioner Zaker, there was. That was by a colleague of mine for south of Main Street, not in the Auto Park North, this was Auto Park East.
Nice, thank.
All right, any other clarifying questions from colleagues? All right, okay, seeing none, we're going to go to, um, let's see here, there's some clarifying questions. All right, so, um, we're gonna do a call for a four-minute pause, allow the public to submit any final comments on an item before the Commissioners' deliberation, and if staff will be so kind to present the timer.
Gabriel Inocense, are you able to present the timer?
Let me change roles, hold on.
All right, now that the time has closed, do we have any comments from the record?
Chair Gutierrez, no comments were received via eComment or email. Thank you.
Right, so who wants to kick us off for deliberations? I'll be looking at your little screens here. Regarding design review item, we'll be, Commissioner Nava, I'm looking at you as a resident architect. I know I don't see you pop up on your screen, but, uh, do you want to kick us off with your thoughts on the design and of this project?
Um, yes, I guess so. Well, I don't have a lot of comments on the project, it's a pretty straightforward, compliant design with its own, like, like the architecture, like the colors, blends with the with the, with the theme of the, of the area. I think it's a very nice project, it's, um, I'm not looking at it right now, but, um, I don't, I don't, I don't really have any, any, um, negative comments about it. I think it's a, it's a great project in addition to the area.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Nava. And don't all, don't all bite at once, but now I'm looking over at you, Commissioner Burrows, you know, your resident landscape architect and your other designer review commissioner, anything you want to share?
Um, I'll jump in. I, you know, I don't really have any, any major questions or concerns about this project either, it's, um, you know, it is pretty straightforward, it suits the land use that it's, you know, that is planned for, and I, you know, I feel like it's, you know, it's a good fit for, for the space. Um, so, yeah, I don't really have anything to add, the architecture is nice. Um, and I feel like it's, you know, I don't feel like there are any additional traffic concerns or parking issues or any of the, the kind of, you know, boilerplate items that we usually look for in, you know, in these types of projects, so, um, yeah, I, I support it.
Okay, so is that, do you have a motion on the floor to say you support it, you want to, so would you like to make a motion on this one?
Uh, I will make a motion, sure.
All right. So we have a motion made to approve this project by Commissioner Burrows, is there a second? I can't, I didn't catch it all at once, but I'm gonna think that that was Torres or Milburn. Uh, I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna give it to Torres. Uh, really, so we have a motion made by Burrows and seconded by Torres for a designer review item approval.
Hey, Gabe. Gabe, this is.
Yeah.
Let's, uh, let's, uh, let's have someone actually make a second, they could turn their mic on and say, I second.
All right, sure.
All right, this is Commissioner Torres, I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate that, I guess it's always good to have that loud and verbal for the record, so we have a motion made by Commissioner Burrows, seconded verbally by Commissioner Torres. Um, so I think it's almost time for a roll call, Madam Secretary, would you lead us with the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Burrows.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Rosa. Commissioner De La Rosa may still be having some audio difficulties.
Well, we can come back to him in a second, and then we could save him for last.
Commissioner Milburn.
Aye.
Commissioner Nava.
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Vice Chair Zaker.
Aye.
Chair Gutierrez.
Aye.
And I'd like to ask Mike Shirey how we could go about with Commissioner De La Rosa's vote.
You know, I don't see the Commissioner on, on the meeting. I'm assuming he's here because you keep talking about him.
Yes.
Can we show that somehow?
Yeah, he's there. He's on the square, if, if you.
I don't, I don't see him on the squares.
I, I see him on the, I see his, his name on a gray square, but I see no video nor do I hear any audio.
Yes.
So I guess we could have that for the record, is that, what do you think, Mr. Chair?
Can he, can he, um, well, do you know, is he, is he hearing us, Patricia?
Um, let me, Commissioner, let me see.
Or can you, can you email him directly?
Yes, I can do that.
Why don't you send him a quick email, just say, confirm that you're in the meeting and what is your vote on this issue?
Thank you, I'll do that right now.
Okay, if you could just kind of wait, Chair, see how we, how this works out.
If, if I may, yeah, he, everybody can see him as an attendee list on the, if everybody opens their attendee list, you, you will be able to see him, and then Patricia may be able to unmute him. So.
Okay, try that. Okay, I do see that he's a participant, so is that what you're talking about? That means he's actually in the meeting?
Yes, correct, he may not be able to talk to us, but unless Patricia can unmute him, maybe he has that option, otherwise it would be just by email then.
Okay.
Yeah, for some, for some reason, I'm unable to unmute him, but I'm gonna send him an email.
All right, let's, let's see if he responds. Um, it looks like he is in the meeting under the participant section, so that's boxes checked. And let's see if he responds on the email.
And I'm gonna be the guy that says this is a great opportunity that I look forward to returning back to our chambers.
Commissioners, I did receive an email response from Commissioner De La Rosa, and his response says, I heard the presentation and I voted in favor of the motion. And he did try to comment in the chat.
Okay, perfect, let me, um, okay, so that, so that's good enough, so it looks like we have a unanimous approval on this item. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, staff, for being professional and creative as always, so it looks like the motion passes, all those present and all those even having technical difficulties voting aye. Uh, which brings us to item number 6.1, meeting minutes, this is to approve the meeting minutes for the date of May 26, 2021. Um, do any questions, have any comments or questions regarding those, those minutes? Scroll through. All right, seeing none from your faces, I'll now call for a two-minute pause to allow the public to submit any final comments on the item.
Okay, while you're watching the timer, this is Gerald Davis, I'm the architect for the Mosses, so I'm gonna sign out since our, our item is approved, and I'll be talking with you, Oscar, later.
Thank you, sir, congratulations. Thank you, sir, congratulations.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, time's up. Madam Secretary?
Chair Gutierrez, no comments were received via e-comment and or email.
All right, thank you so much, do we need to do, it looks like we need to do a roll call vote to approve these minutes?
Yes, I will now request each member's vote by roll call, please. Commissioner Burrows?
Yes.
Commissioner Melbourne?
Aye.
Commissioner Nava?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Vice Chair Zaker? Vice Chair Zaker?
Aye.
Chair Gutierrez?
Aye.
And Commissioner De La Rosa, if you could please email me your vote? Thank you.
All right, just going to wait for Commissioner De La Rosa's reply, and then once we get it, we'll move on to the next item. Madam Chair, can you please, I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, could you please check messages Commissioner De La Rosa has indicated to me via text message?
Yes, he voted in favor of accepting the minutes, thank you.
Thank you, which brings us to item number seven, which is staff's comments, our wonderful director, do you have some comments for us today?
I don't have any comments this evening, I do owe you a Bayfront Report, and I will be making that at the next meeting because I am busy working on the Bayfront, but we're making good progress, and it looks like we are on track for city council import action on the financing package on the 15th. So I literally am working on it right now, but hoping to bring you guys a big update at our next meeting on that, so appreciate your patience. And I'm sorry, and you want to know when you're back in chambers, I know, so where we are on that is, we are starting, we have moved the city council back into the chambers. We are waiting to see what's going to happen with the governor's executive order right now in terms of public meetings. Should the public order be rescinded in full, we would immediately need to, you know, return back to in-person meetings. Until that happens, because of all of the additional action that is required to have an in-person meeting, which includes taking people's temperatures, having staff that are monitoring the door, enforcing social distancing, there's a lot that goes into it, they the city manager's office is asking us to continue to meet virtually, unless we have an item which is going to generate a lot of public interest, in which case we would accommodate that so that the public could come in and participate in that process, which is a little bit counterintuitive, because the more people that are there, the harder that's going to be, so short answer, hopefully by your next meeting, but it's a little bit up to the governor, and we'll see what happens, but I know you guys want to back in chambers. I've been very consistent in communicating that to everyone else, and we want to get you guys back in there too as soon as possible.
Director and Mr. Chair, if I could add something?
Sure.
Yeah, I saw something on one of my legal websites that I get, that the governor actually has extended not meeting the Brown Act for meetings, and has extended virtual meetings until the first of the year. Should a city want to choose to do that?
Okay, so now we could just blame the city manager's office if we don't get it.
No, I'm just, I just wanted to have all the information, because there was something on that.
I'm just teasing, well, yeah, okay.
That's good to know, Mike, thank you, I will follow up and see, and I will continue to advocate for getting you guys back in there, I know how hard it is to meet this way. I'm right there with you.
Thank you so much, all right, okay, now I guess the chair's comments, I have none. Colleagues, any comments for today, are we going to call a short meeting, oh, we got a comment by Commissioner Torres?
If I may, I have a couple of questions, one's a specific question, and one is a general question for staff. One is, what's the status on the balanced community affordable housing policy update? Because if you recall, when we had our joint meeting on February 24th with the Housing Commission on the housing element update, which was really well done, there was the glaring omission of the update of that policy, and Lillani had stated that that would be forthcoming at some future date in time, so I just wanted to know when we could expect that in the foreseeable future, or can we get a status report, you know, verbal status report at our next meeting?
So Commissioner Torres, I can let you know that right now we are continuing to work feverishly with HCD to finalize our housing element, and that is definitely the highest priority task for that group right now, we are with the rest of the San Diego region, the first region in the state going through this new process with the state, and they are making up the rules as we go. And I'm sure you've all seen some of the articles that have been published lately about some of the challenges that our neighboring jurisdictions are having. We are in good shape, but it is certainly taking all of the effort of the team to get that completed, and we'll be taking that item back to council on our July 13 meeting, and hopefully wrapping up our housing element work at that point. Once we're done with that, and we have a certified and approved housing element, we will begin the implementation effort, and we'll put together a work program for that. Happy to come back and discuss that with you in more detail at that point.
Okay, sounds good, so I just paid, because again, I don't know the logistic, if the balance community policy update has to go through the Housing Commission first before the Planning Commission or concurrently or whatever, but I just wanted to be, I just want the other commissioners who had some concern about that to be reassured that at some point this year that will be coming back to us. Okay, sounds good, so here's the general question, is that for staff, I had read an extremely interesting article about a housing development in Valencia, California. It's a 21,000 grand community plan, 21,000 housing units with a goal of net zero carbon emissions, that was the pre-planned goal by the developer Five Point, and that the entire, once everything is said and done, there will be a net zero carbon emission from that 21,000 housing plan, and I was wondering, has staff thought about evoking or invoking something similar to that with the future housing projects that are forthcoming to the planning commission about getting to that net zero carbon emission threshold?
So that has not been something that has been discussed to date. We have found that the state's requirements for energy efficiency are aggressive enough that we've been comfortable simply, not getting out in front of them, but we've been comfortable recently with following the state rules and regulations, as you can well imagine, those sorts of requirements are exactly the sort of things that make housing more expensive, so we're always trying to balance those things out. And we can have a big conversation about this, right, in terms of ongoing savings versus initial capital investment and all those things, so it's definitely an ongoing conversation, and how do we balance out those priorities, because both of those things are absolute priorities of the city. But I think if there was going to be any sort of a recommendation around that, it would probably come out of the Climate Action Plan Working Group.
Okay.
Would be where that would come out to us, and then it would be a conversation with our partners in the BIA and the developers, and is that something that would even be possible, but it's not anything that's in the works right now, that's fascinating that they were able to accomplish that, I would imagine that's a pretty big set aside for onsite renewable generation. Yeah.
That was part of it, and I would just encourage you guys to look at that, I mean, I was taken aback, it was an article I read through the CNBC website, and, but it was a lot of players involved, and it based on what I read, it didn't seem insurmountable to accomplish that, but again, this was open space, you know, starting from the ground up, 21,000, a master planned community, so, but I you know, if it has to go through the Climate Action Plan Group, then I'd like to put that little notion in their heads, if I may. Okay, thanks a lot, that's it.
And any other colleagues have any comments? All right, Joe, well, you know, it looks like we had a nice, great meeting, so I thank everybody for working hard and being flexible.
We'll be in two weeks, Patricia, sorry to ask.
Commissioners, the meeting for June 23rd will be canceled due to lack of agenda items, so the next one will be July 14.
Okay, well, because I was asking, because my term is on June 30th.
And Commissioner Nava, in the past, when we've had this happen, you basically stay on until until the city, the city council mayor do their, I could probably imagine that it's, do their interviews, and they find a replacement. That's what's happened in the past with other commissioners I've seen.
Yep, you're drafted, Javier.
You don't want me to say goodbye, and yeah, I will.
We just had a nice little pandemic thing going on, so appreciate your flexibility as we try to maintain these businesses, you know, as these meetings and all that jazz, but definitely appreciate your service.
Yeah, make them drag you out by your feet.
See you next meeting, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.